I want to call the July 10, 2025 O'Fallon City Council Workshop to order roll call, kind of.
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilmember Wexler.
Present.
Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Boyer.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Bibb.
Mark him in attendance when he arrives.
Councilmember Caschella.
Present.
Councilmember Kewen.
Present.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Cook.
Present.
And Councilmember Ragsdale.
All right, folks, you have an agenda in front of you. What's a pleasure?
Motion approved, Caschella.
Second, Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Caschella, second by Councilman Wexler. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything on the agenda you want folks to want to talk about? Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff is requesting that table to table Bill 7772. This is to amend language on our liquor license ordinance, but staff has found, thanks to Councilmember Taylor, some verbiage that needs to be further amended. We would ask that we bring this back at the next meeting.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? All right. And the other thing on the agenda you folks want to talk about? See, none. Like to have a motion second to approve the workshop meeting minutes of June 19 and June 26, 2025.
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second.
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is an economic development update.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate this opportunity. It has been a little while since I have done an update for you, and so I would say that we've been very, very busy. But that's not a good excuse. But it's always a good time to talk to you about economic development and what's going on in our great city of O'Fallon. Have a PowerPoint here I'd like to just kind of quickly go through with you. If I can make it work. Well, maybe not. Ah, next, something? Something? Maybe? Oh, there we go. There we go. Always like to start out with a quick assessment of our situation here going on in the city of O'Fallon. We track occupancy rates through our source, Costar Commercial Real Estate. They are the source for tracking availability of buildings, land in the St. Louis region, well, nationally, but we get the St. Louis region reports. And our occupancy rates continue to remain high, well above 90% in all three sectors. And year over year, we're actually up in commercial retail and also industrial flex space in terms of total percentage of occupancy. And we're staying steady in the office sector. As you know, we have a very large space within the city building in 1,000 Technology Drive that we still have not been able to get a user back into that space that city consolidated down into one wing of that building. And unfortunately, Sinlar, who's occupying the first floor of that available wing, is going to be closing here at the end of the month. And so we're going to be losing about 90 jobs there. And so there will be some additional space there, too. The good news is that Gateway Fiber is moving their headquarters operation into O'Fallon, and they're going to be located in the building that is shared over by the Hilton Garden Inn and shared with Flatworld, Y-Pro, Tech Mahindra. And they're going to be bringing about 120 employees to that location. So that's good news for our city. Openings and closings, right now, we're kind of running even. But a lot of this closing activity, if you look at that number, is we also track the fact that a business closes one operation in the city of O'Fallon and moves to another location. So there's an offset. And those tend to fall a little bit behind. So technically, we do have a net gain for the year, small net gain, but it's tracking a little bit behind. 21 ribbon cuttings, again, very strong pace on ribbon cutting activity, new businesses that are actually opening up. And then we also track our social media activity. This is all on the monthly report that we include in your packet every month, the number of impressions and the fact that this month, in June, we had a click-through rate of 11.7%, which normally doing well is 5% to 6%. I mean, our click-through rate this past month in terms of what we did on our social media activity was double that number. There we go. Some of our more popular LinkedIn posts this month, we did one about summer patio space that had an impressive, almost 70% engagement rate, people actually clicking on it, looking at it. We had a great post that's in your packet, the new Joya's Deli here that is just knocking it out of the ballpark. In the article, they refer to O'Fallon as the land of milk and honey. They have found such the receptivity, the enthusiasm by the clients and the customers that are showing up, the fact that people will stand out in line out their door to get one of their hot salami sandwiches has just been impressive. And they really appreciated the support they've received. Few pictures. I always like to show a few pictures, some of the successes we've had. Harbor Freight opened up. It's in the space next to what's going to be Rosalita's Cantina. The construction is the new Apache Village that's right there on Drennen off a highway that should be open here, hopefully before the end of the year. So again, a lot of good success, very high occupancy rate. I like to also keep us a balanced presentation. And we always love talking about all the great news that's going on here in the city of O'Fallon, but I also like to let you know that we do have a few concerns. And last time I was in front of you, the concerns that I talked about were we were seeing just kind of a recent, a lot of churn in terms of our restaurants. And we had lost a number of restaurants in that kind of that timeframe. We still have some vacancies, very noticeable vacancies in the downtown that we're trying to work on. And there are some continued uncertainties on some of the large undeveloped tracks in our city, impacts of the roadway improvement projects on our businesses, small and large. And then always the struggle we have with lack of developable industrial land for new job generators. And we'll talk about that in a little bit more here in a minute. Those concerns remain. But in this particular case, almost every one of those restaurants that we talked about back in September have been filled. And the only one that's not yet filled is the Burger King down here on South Main. We had a prospect on that. They were a go. There was site plan approval, and they just put that on hold for a short amount of time. We're hoping that that project will still go through. But you know, you compare this to other projects that we have been working on in terms of the cappuccinos that has sat empty in front of Walmart for a long, long time is going to become Ichiro Bowls. They're working on that right now. The Walnut Grill that closed was immediately filled by Brani Brothers, or Brani Bros., I'm sorry, Brani Bros. And St. Louis Colachi, which is there in Frontier Plaza, has been filled by Hawaiian Poke that has now opened. So restaurant space is premium space. Businesses, the investment they have to put in to convert non-restaurant space to restaurant space is very expensive, time-consuming. And so when we have restaurants that come open, we have quite a bit of interest, and they tend to get filled pretty quickly. Cappuccino's is about the only one that has kind of defied that logic a little bit. Vacancies still remain in the downtown. We are, again, continuing to focus on that, trying to find creative solutions to get those buildings filled. We still have some large tracts of land very close by to us here that we still find some challenges on in terms of ownership or obligations or conditions on those properties. And so we're still working to find solutions for that. And we continue to make investments in our roadways and improvements and very important projects, whether they're roundabouts, intersection improvements, whatever they are. They do impact our citizens and our businesses. And so we try to work with those businesses to make sure that, one, they know what the timing is, the impacts they're going to be, and help them get through that time. And we could always use more space. We have a lot of demand for space, job generators in our community, helping maintain that balanced community that is key to our long-term success. And so it's one of those things, we can't create land, but we are always in need. What I wanted to do for the rest of my time here this evening is talk to you a little bit about business attraction. And this is one of the areas that we get a lot of inquiry about. We know this is a very high priority for the mayor, and he's mentioned that during the budget priority meeting. So I wanted to just talk a little bit about our approach that we take here representing the city of O'Fallon in business attraction. We take every opportunity given to us. As we get demands for projects coming our way, we are responding to those immediately. And we're going to share a little bit more about information about that. So every opportunity that comes our way, we're giving it our full effort. We're finding our own opportunities. I think as former council member Rick Lucas used to say to me, be aggressive. And we've taken that to heart over the last, in my time, nine years, that, you know, we are going to go out there and not only wait for opportunities to come to us, but we're going to pursue opportunities on our own. And so we're going to share a little bit more about that. And then finally, create new opportunities. You know, it's not just a balance of them coming to us and us going out and finding them. There is opportunities that we have to create new economic opportunities in the city, and we think that's very important. And we really appreciate the support that you give us in being able to do that. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to my colleague, Megan Bacham, our business recruiter. Megan has been now with us for just right at 11, 12, 13, 14 months, so somewhere around there. Time flies. I would say, you know, she has been a great addition to our team. In addition to all the good work that she is doing, Megan recently completed the University of Missouri-St. Louis's Chancellor's Certificate Program for Fundamentals in Economic Development. So she's putting in extra time and effort to continue to learn more about economic development. And she's going to talk to you about a lot of her good work that she's been doing this past year. So Megan?
Forgot one other certification I got this year as well.
Yeah, planning one.
The Hartland certification as well, that was a week away outside Kansas City to do that as well. So lots and lots of learning has come about. So you don't know me, as Patrick said, I started last April. My career prior to this was all in sales. So I'm all about knowing, coming in here, I'm helping to sell O'Fallon, and that's the intention that I bring to it. So as kind of lead off where Patrick left us off here is taking every opportunity that comes to us. So that low-hanging fruit that's coming at us, any of these things that we see, typically what that we incorporate into that is RFIs. So those are requests for information. So those will come through EDC, Greater St. Louis, St. Charles County will send us information specific to what they're needing. So typically, this is large industrial. What we're seeing currently is more larger industrial and data centers. So unfortunately, a lot of our infrastructure can't support what they're asking for. So last year, we had a total of 40 requests came through. This year, we're at 27. Of those, last year, we were able to submit and provide information on 14 locations that we had to try to meet the needs that the RFI met. This year, so far, we're at six that we've submitted back, that we potentially had opportunity. The restrictions that we're seeing on that in our industrial space, a lot of times the ceiling height. Everybody's coming now to us needing things that are 25, 26-foot ceiling heights, and a lot of our industrial buildings are stuck at 20. So it's not really something that we can get hurtled, that we can get over for them. And as Patrick said, land. The only massive amount of land we have right now is off of Hoff Road, which is about 100 acres there, which actually, we are working with a Fortune 500 company right now that is prospecting that for 400 to 500 new jobs. So where that is an exciting opportunity that we have that's prospecting that right now. Another really big portion of what I do on a day-to-day basis is building relationships with our local and commercial brokers and realtors to make sure they know I'm here to help them and to support them and not competition for them, right? I'm not coming in to take over. I want to make sure that they know I'm here, and when they have something that's coming in, that they're reaching out to us, they know we're here to help support them and help make that process smooth for those businesses that are trying to come in. And a lot of our, I would say, restaurant retail spaces are what's coming through with those commercial brokers. The RFIs are our industrial employee base, larger employee base, opportunities that are coming. So with that, I'm always out promoting, if you're not familiar with our Build-in-the-O or Open-in-the-O opportunities that we have for our businesses to be a part of. We get very high praise for doing these meetings because it really helps walk those businesses through step-by-step what to expect from us before they come to you guys. So hopefully we can narrow out, get through all of any issues, concerns that they may have, and for them to be able to present a solid proposal to you guys, and hopefully it's accepted and we can move forward with it. So that's something that's really, really well-received, accepted. Any brokers that I work with highly appreciate that we do that. And they say that they don't see that anywhere else. So that's kudos to us to creating those. Before me, I didn't create these. These are great, great programs that we have in place that are ready to help show us as being very business-friendly, and that's key for these businesses coming to O'Fallon. They want something fast and business-friendly. So with that last statement there, our goal is to serve and be a goodwill ambassador for all of these partners that are in the area here. Now, let's hopefully I know how to click through this one. So as Patrick said, we need to go out and find our own opportunities. That's what I'm here. I'm not just sitting here at my desk waiting for an RFI to come through or a broker to call me and say, hey, Megan, I need this space. I am actively looking and searching every day of what are the new, next new chains, what's coming out, what's coming down the pipeline, what are concerns, what's going to be the new next big thing that's going to be growing in the area. So one of those things, when Patrick hired me, says, I hope you are a road warrior, because that's what I'm going to be. And I love that, because prior, that's why I didn't even sit in an office. I was in a car all day, every day on the road, meeting with my customers. So that's very exciting to be able to continue to do that in this role. The trade shows are huge for us to be able to get out there and be face-to-face with these franchise chains, because that's the hardest thing to get into, is to find that franchisee to come to our area. So these trade shows and conventions give me that opportunity to get in front of them and present what O'Fallon has to offer. Also doing partnered mission trips. I've gone to Dallas, Patrick has done the Chicago trips. I've gone to Dallas a couple of times now. And this is, if you know anything in the industry, Dallas is booming right now with new movement, new industries, new, everybody is targeting Dallas as the new location. It's like the mass exodus of California now. It's all in Dallas. So it's great to be there in front of site selectors to let them know about us and what we have to offer. And just a few other things that we do on the daily to get out in front of people. We do a monthly Mail Chip newsletter. I do multiple direct mailing campaigns throughout the year. Those are typically going to our commercial real estate and brokers. If you know what F-to-F, that's face-to-face. So I actively go out and try to recruit businesses to O'Fallon. Just last week, I was over in Edwardsville, dropping off that beautiful Joya's article that we have there to encourage them that we're the land of milk and honey. You want to be on this side of the river as well. So I actively go in that and do that, just drop off. I'm not trying to poach anybody, just if they want to do some expansion, O'Fallon's a place to do that. Networking events, attend these constantly. Again, that's all about that relationship building. So whether it's through the EDC, Greater St. Louis, the St. Charles Association Chamber, which we know is very active in O'Fallon. And then marketing, this year, I actually did my first networking event that we hosted to brokers and realtors as well. So I want to continue to do that. It was very well-received. And again, it's just that opportunity to get face-to-face in front of these brokers and continue to develop that relationship with them. Of course, we have our social media posts that Patrick alluded to earlier as well. We've done multiple articles and publications that I believe, the blue one that you see in your packet as well, that was a local publication that we did as well in the CNR magazine. And then something new that I brought to the team, this video outreach. So this is something I had done, and I actually started it through COVID as being a basically door-to-door salesman. I couldn't get out and be face-to-face with my customers, so I had to figure out a different way to get in front of them. So I found this platform called Vidyard. And what it does is it allows you to send video messaging, or I can do just sit in front of it and say a quick blip or whatever I want to talk to them about. And it gets, you know, we all get bogged down by emails, but videos, you typically will click on to see what the heck is this. So it was a great way to do that. So I've gone around the city and done multiple videos of locations that we have available. So here's just a quick, I don't know how to record this to play. There we go. Coming to you today here from the great city of O'Fallon and Caledonia. When completed, there will be 700 single-family homes here. What I'm showing right now are four lots that are available, ranging from 1.1 to 1.8 acres. Across the street, you have a lot of activity going on. The new Cambria Hotel is being built. You have the Russ Soccer Park. And behind that, the Old Regal Theater, which is currently under construction as well, being redeveloped into an entertainment complex retaining three theaters. We also have the mobile on-the-run gas station directly across the street. Great access off Highway I-644061, lighted intersection. These lots will not stay long. Come and check them out. This is a beautiful new location in a booming area of O'Fallon. And actually, I believe of those four lots already, I think we've got three that are marketed. So even since I've done this last month, these lots are already getting scooped up. So that's just a little clip of one I have done. It's always so weird to hear your own voice in a video. It's very well-received. So this is just kind of a screenshot of what the Vidyard application looks like, and you can just see the multiple videos that I've taken. And what's cool about this is when I send this out, I can actually see if somebody's opened it, if they've watched the entire video, if they watched 10 seconds of it, and then see how they're interacting with it. So it is really a cool tool to be able to see that and see how much reaction I'm getting from that. And then that lets me know, oh, hey, they opened that video. They looked at that. I need to reach out to them again and see what they thought, if they're not responding to me. So just one of the many tools that I'm using to do this, of course, it's emails, phone calls, video, and keep following up, keep following up, right? So just making sure I'm staying at and trying to target them in as many different ways as I can to get their attention, to see what's happening here in O'Fallon. So this is a video I had done for the Burger King location. So, okay. This one, you want to jump back in? Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Megan. Appreciate the sharing all that kind of detail. And it doesn't, it's hard to really capture all the good work that she's doing in terms of that type of outreach effort on our behalf. The final area that I wanted to share with you is what we call creating new opportunities. And, you know, we want to be proactive in finding win-win business deal situations that we can explore. And I think the O'Fallon Playfield Commons is a great example of that. Literally, it was a meeting that the city administrator, the mayor and I had with a developer and talking about how do we drive more hotel activity to O'Fallon, and came up with the suggestion, sports tourism, this is how we can do it, here's a place you can do it. And literally, within months, that project was up and running. The developer bought the land, has submitted plans, and, you know, we're trying to, you know, bring that project finally home, and it's going to have a huge impact. But it was something that was created out of nothing. And again, the Mercy and Desco property at 364 and Highway K is another example of a property that's sat there for so long and finding creative ways to get that project moving forward. And we have other properties that we are working on, too, as Megan just mentioned, and her good work with the group that's purchased the Regal Theater and the gyrations they've gone through to try to get that facility up and running again and finding users for it. These are all type of creative, creative solutions that we have generated through our team here with the city. And we truly appreciate the latitude and the opportunity and the support that you give us and the city council that we can count on to make those kind of deals One last thing. O'Fallon, again, was ranked number one. The US City News and World Report recently came out with a study of, they looked at 850 cities across the country and ranked 250 as the best places to live in America. And once again, O'Fallon came out number one in Missouri, number 29 in the U.S. And so we are working very hard to share this good news with others. Right here in front of you is one of our banners. If you look out in the foyer area, you'll see more of those banners. We are promoting this and working with our public relations firm to make sure that everybody knows about this. It is also the basis for the cup that you all have. Tony Machaca said, yeah, thank you. Tony Machaca said, on the way down to this meeting, like, where's the champagne? I was like, oh, my lord, I should have brought champagne. So I toast to all of you, virtually here, that we cannot do this without your support. And we truly appreciate what you do for this great city, creating it as the best place to live and makes it the best place to work and play. So thank you for all of that. And with that, Megan and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Linda?
Thank you, Mayor. Patrick, I just this morning had somebody, a constituent, ask me about Burger King, the Burger King location. Do we feel like that's gone, or where are we on that?
Megan?
I would not say that it's 100% gone yet. This was, of course, we all know Starbucks was who was supposed to be going in and filling that. I've developed a really good relationship with a broker that is actually going to purchase the property still. He's still moving forward with actually purchasing the property. Starbucks has just had some turmoil internally with some new change in CEO, and now they've decided, well, maybe we want to pause a couple projects. So I would say it's paused. I wouldn't say it's indefinitely dead, but just with knowing that, we're actively looking for backup plans for that, too.
To add to that, I was going to say that when Megan and I met with a broker developer that's, he said, I so much believe in this particular location and what it can bring. I'm going to go ahead and, without Starbucks still on the hook, I'm going to commit to buying this and making this deal happen. So we feel good that we will find a good user for that space, whether it's Starbucks or someone else.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I've had a ton of people ask about that. And I know Debbie and I met with the broker, and I think especially because of their location, that's really a hot commodity. And we have a lot of people that are asking, when is something going to happen? So.
Very visible, right off of 70. We want something in there soon. Yeah, yeah. And nationally. I mean, when we spoke with him as well, we expressed our want for something that's a national need in there, not just a run-of-the-mill, something that's going to attract and bring people into the city.
Mr. Kewen?
Yeah, Megan, you said you're not trying to poach businesses?
Yeah, Megan, you said you're not trying to poach businesses. Feel free to poach businesses. Just wanted to put that out there.
I just don't want that to be the word I use.
Well, let's call it something else, then.
We're seeking expansion, but if you decide to relocate to O'Fallon, we're good with that, too.
Yeah.
Yep. Anybody else?
Just from my office, I know you, you hear from me constantly, but I know you guys are working your tails off and, you know, with you and your team, Alexis and Patty and Ann, you guys do a heck of a job in keeping this, the great city of O'Fallon. So, I mean, I even got Mayor Pregano saying the great city of O'Fallon.
Well, it's a two-way street. You guys create a great city for us to market, and we can definitely make it, continue to make that a great city. So thank you so much.
Okay. Anybody else? It's the last chance to talk to economic development. Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Any other items of consideration? Saying none, like to have motion go to closed session, 610-0211, legal action, cause of action or litigation involving a governmental body or, and any confidential privileged communication between a public governmental body and its representative and its attorney. 610-0212, leasing, purchasing, or sale of real estate. And 610-02112, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are open, and sealed proposals and related documents or any documents related to negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected.
So move.
Most by Councilman Kuhn. Is that Ragsdale down there?
Yeah.
Second by Councilman Ragsdale.
Third.
Roll call.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cook.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhn.
Yes.
Councilmember Wexler.
Yes.
Councilmember Ragsdale.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Cascola.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bibb.
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned. We'll be up in the community room at 610. Want to call July 10th, 2025, O'Fallon City Council meeting to order. Roll call, Katie.
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilmember Wexler.
Present.
Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Boyer.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Bibb.
Present.
Councilmember Cascola.
Present.
Councilmember Kuhn.
Present.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Cook.
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale.
Here.
Member, please stand for the invocation by Brandon Keisling, Associate Pastor from the First Baptist Church of O'Fallon, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray together. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this night. We thank you for the chance to gather in this room and to do the business of this great city. We're thankful for the many administrators and employees of the city. And Lord, just pray you bless them, keep them. And Lord, we're just, again, looking to you tonight for wisdom as we make decisions to move the city forward in a direction that is pleasing to those that live here. And so we give you great praise and glory for all that you are and all that you do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, you have an agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve, Bibb.
Cascola.
Most by Councilman Bibb, second by Councilman Cascola. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Chief, we got a new officer.
It's my pleasure to introduce the newest member to Team O'Fallon and the O'Fallon Police Department, Officer Christopher Sutton. Officer Sutton grew up in Fredericktown, Missouri, and after graduating high school, he continued his education at Maryville University, where he earned his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Following his academic studies, Officer Sutton attended the St. Louis County and Municipal Police Academy, graduating in June of 2023. From there, Officer Sutton joined the Creve Court Police Department, where he served the residents of Creve Court for two and a half years. During his time, he has demonstrated a strong commitment to law enforcement and brings with him a passion for serving the community. Outside of work, Officer Sutton enjoys hunting, fishing, and spending quality time with his friends and family. He has also recently engaged to his fiancee, Sharanity, also known as Shay. We're proud to welcome Officer Sutton to our team today. Joining him for this special occasion are his fiancee Shay, his mother Harveta, his father Jim, and his stepfather Ross. We're excited to have him on Team O'Fallon and look forward to the positive impact he will have on our community. Welcome to Team O'Fallon. I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity. Very excited to work here. Excited to meet everybody in the community and get to know you all. And again, thank you all.
Next, on the Presidenoff Report, we have Heritage and Freedom Fest recap video. Gentlemen?
It's America's birthday party, and the guest list is impressive. You, the city of O'Fallon makes the best host with outstanding catering, a lively dress code, and some outstanding entertainment. There may be some brief intervals of some exercise, and maybe even a bit of a swim. But our dazzling dessert makes it all worth it. Let's take a look back at this year's Heritage and Freedom Fest.
O'Fallon, this community that we have is amazing. Number one city in the state of Missouri, 29 in the country. It's a great place to live, and I can't thank the veterans enough for what they do for us.
It's great to be able to get together during the summer out here in the sunshine, enjoy some great music, enjoy great company, good food, fun rides. What's, what's not to love?
This has been amazing. The parade this morning was awesome to see the lineup, people out there, all of O'Fallon coming out. And then here at the Freedom Fest, this is great. Mark Perkins is back here. He's from O'Fallon. He kicks butt.
Prior military, I come from Missouri, I'm a National Guard. So those who serve overseas in our, in our communities every day, to be able to make sure that we can sit here and we can enjoy all this on 4th of July is just amazing.
Fourth of July means to me celebrating the amazing country that we are in and celebrating the veterans, people in law enforcement, first responders, active military, and just giving back thanks.
Very thankful, appreciative of the militaries, of our veterans, man, being able to protect our rights and our freedoms to be able to do so.
It means being able to get together with your family and sharing all the great things that your community has to offer and having a good time with the kids and creating some, you know, good memories.
Really family-friendly, and we've been here every year, so, to the festivals. So I thank you guys for putting it on, and it's awesome.
Oh, I think this festival is the best festival in the county, because I think it's like a nice way to bring people from outside the county and the sideline together and have fun. Freedom, fun, and family is what we're all here for.
This year's parade was kicking. Great American Road Trip was the theme, with Church on the Rock taking the town prize for best float. And everyone loves hearing our Fort Zumwald North and West bands marching past in all their glory. Check out the parade in its entirety on O'Fallon TV and on YouTube. Entertainment Alley had everyone saluting the United States Marine Corps as they added a patriotic touch to our Independence Day party. Anyone heroic enough to try their hands and trigger fingers on the battle-positioned virtual reality simulator. The next stop was the glass-blowing exhibit. These artists showed off their amazing creativity and craftsmanship with this ancient art, live and up close. The prehistoric dinosaur adventures exhibit gave tomorrow's leading paleontologists a chance to dig into a bedrock of exciting hands-on activities. And of course, O'Fallon Police was back again with their ever-popping Charity Dump, letting citizens uniquely interact with police and council members. And everyone got along swimmingly.
Let's go, baby. Fourth of July, 249th birthday of the great United States of America, the greatest country in the world. Let's go.
Wanna go for a ride? This year's rides were fast, more high-flying, brought more smiles than ever before. And with an all-day unlimited ride respect, both little kids and big kids got to keep their pulses pounding, day and night. It was the kind of fun for which you needed to stretch first, as the competition was fierce. Anyone brave enough to test their skills with the games on the midway earned just rewards. And if nothing else, a little respect for trial. And none of this fun would ever be possible without the dedicated team of volunteers who are always there for us when we need them.
I just like volunteering. I like seeing the people and helping them out, and they're all having such a good time. Everybody's having a happy fortnight, it looks like. Well, I got five grown kids and I got 11 grandkids, so when I see these guys, I think of my little ones. You know, you get out, you meet people, I don't know, it's just, just good. And you get a free shirt.
On July 4th, our Rock Night headliner, Neon Trees, had everyone begging for more. Then on July 5th, Country Night Headliner Gabby Barrett returned to the main stage, proving once again with her amazing voice that she really is as good as it gets.
We're building upon what was there before us. All of the men and women that have been out fighting for us to be free, this is why we're out here. We get to live that forward. We, we need to love one another, and that, that's it.
In 1776, a bunch of farmers, merchants, teachers, average Joes declared their independence. A community coming together despite their differences. Here we are, almost 250 years later, coming together as one nation, one community, one family, to celebrate how great this country is.
All right, great job, guys, with our communications. And what you just saw, that was just the edited version. So right now, if you want to go, unless you want to watch this council meeting, you can go to our Facebook page or our YouTube video and see the whole video. So to our communication, guys, great job. We really appreciate it. And the last thing that I have is from my office. I want to thank our Festivals and Tourism Department, all the city employees and city departments, and especially our volunteers who made our Heritage and Freedom Fest a great, great success. Oh, did I just take part of yours? So again, to, I mean, I know it was Festivals and Tourism, but it takes all our city employees and our departments to make this thing go. And I asked the chief today if we had incidents and we had no incidents during those four days that we had at the Heritage and Freedom Fest. So my, my thanks to the residents and everybody who showed up and behaved themselves. And then, you know, I look forward to our next one, which is 250. So we're looking forward to that. So again, so that brings us to citizens' comments. I have one speaker, Mr. Deanoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Arne C., A.C. Deanoff, City Public Advocate. The first issue I'd like to talk about is Bill Number 7767 under Old Business. When we do these dedication of streets especially, I want to make sure that staff is doing their diligence, and they're out there inspecting those slabs and those sidewalks. I've been through Caledonia the last number of months, and I see that slabs out there have been broken, have been split and cracked. I saw a couple of places there were some sidewalks that needed to be replaced. Hopefully, by releasing this bond, that all cracked pavements, all sidewalks, and all replacement slabs have been taken care of. I'll go out there and look around and see if I can find some cracked slabs, but hopefully before we release these bonds, that we make the developer responsible and accountable. When it comes to Bryant Road, Bryant Road needs a lot of love and a lot of help in terms of the concrete slabs. Another $1,171,000 is just not enough to cure the needs and the miserable ride down Bryant Road with all the bumps and the humps and cracks of pavements. Bill Number 7771, voluntary annexation. In my opinion, city staff needs to be more aggressive to grow our city, to grow our city income, and to make a viable city. And we need to be more aggressive and more active in annexing territory and open land. Bill Number 7722 is liquor licenses. And so going through this ordinance, are we recouping and meeting our costs of doing police checks, police background checks, enforcement of our police department, doing sting operations to make sure they're in compliance with the liquor code and the state liquor license, along with our ordinance for the sale of liquor seven days a week? The Public Safety Communication Services with the St. Charles Community College District Department of Police, it's a $5,000 contract. Our dispatchers will be answering the phone between 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. I'm in favor of this, where I opposed the Calhoun one, because in 2023, there were 32 incidents or call events, and in 2024, there were 37 incidents or call events. We're going to make money on this contract, finally. Let's say 35 average calls a year would bring in to our city $143.
You have 15 seconds.
Or per incident. Also on the agenda is storage silos for $107,000, and finally, an agreement for cyber services. The federal government should be paying for this. We shouldn't be paying for it on our coffers.
Mr. Deanoff, your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on his first comment about the streets, I have all the confidence in our department and our inspectors that they are doing the right thing, and if it's not right, they don't get, the folks don't get their money. So I have all the confidence in our street department and our inspectors. So other than that, that's all I have.
Do you want me to add about the liquor licenses? I might add also.
Go ahead.
State law fixes the amount of fees the city can charge for liquor licenses.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Word reports, Word Three.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to the volunteer city staff, police officers, everybody that was involved with Heritage and Freedom Fest. We had an incredible time. Everyone I spoke to had just so much fun, being able to be out and celebrate with all their neighbors, family, and it was just really cool to see everybody come together and have a great time. I also just ask that people continue to pray for those in central Texas affected by the floods. It's terrible seeing what they're going through, and we'll continue to pray for them. Thanks.
Mr. Bibb?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to echo what Councilman Cascola said, great job with Heritage and Freedom Festival.
Just to echo what Councilman Cascola said, great job with Heritage and Freedom Festival. It's always awesome to see staff from multiple departments coming together at that event and how well they flow and work together. It's really truly amazing. Everybody I talked to as well had a great time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Word 4, Ms. Taylor.
Yes, so later this evening, we'll be voting on to approve Resolution B, which would allocate approximately $5,000 annually to maintain our membership in the National Cyber Security Consortium. This is a smart and necessary investment to safeguard our city's digital infrastructure, and I fully support this passage. However, in saying that, it is important to note that this cost was previously covered by federal funding, which was eliminated earlier this year. And cybersecurity isn't the only thing being affected by these recent federal budget cuts. We've seen reductions across the board, cuts that will have very real consequences to our city, to our community, and to the residents who rely on these many essential services. Furthermore, last week, Congress passed a budget bill which contains provisions that among other things could leave as many as 189,000 Missourians without health care, threatens food assistance to 151,000 Missourians, cuts student aid, 45,900 for Missouri students, and may raise our monthly energy bills by roughly 12.9%. And as a result, you know, our local government, like local governments like ours are being asked to do more with less. And while I'm proud to see that our city has taken proactive steps to keep O'Fallon secure and prepared, let's also stay clear-eyed about the long-term impact that these cuts will have on our city and our residents and remain, you know, continue to remain steadfast in putting the health and safety and well-being of our community and residents first and foremost. So thank you.
Mr. Kewen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to echo the comments from Word 3, that I had a wonderful Fourth. I hope everyone else did too. I was very pleased to see that the weather for the large, for the most part, was pretty, pretty palatable. Had some great acts. Can't thank the volunteers enough. This thing just doesn't happen without the dozens and dozens of volunteers that we have for the city. And I think that speaks volumes to the city itself, the fact that so many people are willing to commit their time to, to make this a reality for our, for our citizens. And I obviously can't thank staff enough. I know that all of the staff works very hard to make this happen. I see them all up there doing, doing their part and I'm always very grateful. So happy Fourth. I hope everyone had as good a time as I did, and thanks again to city staff and volunteers.
Word 5.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think this year, the turnout for the parade, I think the turnout for the festival, everything was great. I think the residents of O'Fallon really enjoyed themselves and the city staff always does a wonderful job. I think every year they just seem to improve, improve, improve. So it was a great job. And then some business, we have a HOA on Wednesday, July 16th, the St. Dominic HOA. Will be back here at the multipurpose room at 6 o'clock. So wow, look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Ms. Ragsdale.
Thank you. I don't want city staff and our volunteers and everybody to get a big head, but like everybody else, I just want to commend you all on the fabulous job at Heritage and Freedom Fest. I know I had a wonderful time. Just a reminder for everybody in City of O'Fallon, but I think particularly Ward 1 and Ward 5, City of O'Fallon invites the public to attend an informational open house regarding the upcoming intersection improvements at Tom Janiver Avenue and North Cool Springs on Tuesday, July 15th, from 4 to 6 in the multipurpose room here at City Hall. It's going to be an open house style meeting where there will be plans. And if you're not aware, this has to do with the roundabout. I know that I have been very opposed to this roundabout, this particular roundabout as have several other on the councils, so invite you all to come up for this informational open house.
Thank you. Word 1.
I will also echo everybody on the festival. It was absolutely awesome. Really enjoyed it and it was so cool to see all the residents out there. And I will also say welcome to Officer Sutton. Can't wait to see you out there and see what you can bring to O'Fallon. Thank you.
Mr. Roth.
Yes, there really ain't nothing I can say that hasn't been said yet.
Okay.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Well done. But this is why we call it the great city of O'Fallon.
There you go.
And one thing that nobody really touched on, which makes it one of the biggest things to me about our safety, our city, there was not one incident during that festival. Great job by our police department, but better job by our citizens and our staff to keep everything going. And that's all now, Mayor. It's all yours.
No, it's Word 2's time.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a slightly different thank you to offer up about the Fourth of July weekend, and it really comes from the residents of my neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods on, on Weldon Spring Road and affected by the, the roundabout that's being put in at Crusher and Weldon Spring. Just want to thank city staff and the construction company or the developer who, I guess it's a construction company, who worked to solve a problem for the folks who have been detouring around that as it's been shut down and opened up one way through that intersection while the construction is still happening. And it was open on Thursday, the 3rd, in the afternoon, and everybody really just was very pleased and happy about that. And so just want to thank city staff again for, for all that you did to make that happen.
Mr. Boyer.
Good to bring us home. Again, thank you for the Heritage and Freedom Fest. Every single department was out there and pulling forward. It's again amazing to see everyone together and working so well together. This is why we're number one. Now that we're past the Fourth of July, we get to look forward to school. So there's a couple of opportunities to donate if you want to bring in to here at the City Hall or at the Renad. You can bring in some school supplies for kids that are going to be needed in August. And then Wentzville's got a Back to School Fair on the 9th of August. So a couple of things is we're, now we're, after the Fourth, the school starts up. So thank you.
Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the contributions of some staff members who are reaching milestone anniversaries. Fleet mechanic Jake Bischoff, Inspector David Potts, and Customer Service Representative Joe Ratkowitz have been with O'Fallon for five years. Police Officer Jeff Wassenkemper, Utility Worker Brad Robertson, and Water Plant Operator Tim Stenziger, sorry about that, have served the citizens of O'Fallon for 10 years. So I'd like to thank all six of these individuals for being such an integral part of Team O'Fallon for all these years. I'd also like to echo the mayor and council and to thank all of our employees who worked so hard to make this year yet another amazing Heritage and Freedom Festival. Since there's no way to name everyone individually, I want to just thank all of the divisions and the departments involved. It is amazing to see that four people from tourism and festivals, along with the help of hundreds of other employees and volunteers, can work so hard to put together another successful event for our residents. So thanks again to everyone involved, and that's all I have for tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Brings old business, brings Bill 7767. Motion for second reading.
Bibb.
Motion by Councilman Bibb, second.
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose, Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill Number 7767, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance providing for the approval and acceptance of the dedication of streets and storm sewers excluding detention for maintenance by the City of O'Fallon, Missouri for the Streets of Caledonia Platform Phase 1.
Thank you. Most final passage?
Bibb.
Motion by Councilman Bibb, second.
Cascola.
Second by Councilman Cascola. Questions or comments? Seeing none, council members, cast your vote.
The voting is closed.
10 yes, 0 no. Bill 7767 pass becomes ordinance number?
7227.
7227, thank you, Katie. Brings to Bill 7768. Motion for second reading.
Boyer.
Motion by Councilman Boyer, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. All in favor? Any pose, Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill Number 7768, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance approving a surface transportation block granting program agreement by and between Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the City of O'Fallon to reimburse a portion of the Bryan Road pavement preservation project in an amount not to exceed $1,171,473.
Motion for final passage?
Boyer.
Motion by Councilman Boyer, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Questions? Council members, please cast your vote.
Voting is closed.
10 yes, 0 no. 7768 pass becomes ordinance number?
7228.
7228, thank you, Katie. Questions or comments on the committee and commission reports? Seeing none, we stand as read. Questions or comments on the consent calendar? It's a pleasure. Motion approved. Kewen.
Second, Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second by Councilman Ragsdale. Council members, please cast your vote.
The voting is closed.
10 yes, 0 no. The consent calendar's been approved. Brings new business, says the first is a public comment to consider approval of an ordinance granting a conditional use, conditional use permit for Lot 4 Shady Creek Commercial. Someone here to present this?
Good evening. My name is Larry Walker. I'm with Bax Engineering here tonight for this item on the agenda. What we're requesting tonight is a conditional use permit for a drive-through restaurant for a Scooter's Coffee Shop. This particular facility will be on the end cap of a proposed retail center. The total building size is about 7,633 square feet. Property's located at the southwest corner of Highway N and Lake St. Louis Boulevard. So this particular building, the Scooters will be on the end facing, or not facing, but the end closest to Lake St. Louis Boulevard. So going through the site plan review process and approval, and now we're just requesting, you know, conditional use permit for the, for the drive-through. And I will leave it at that and answer any questions that anybody may have on that project.
Questions for Mr. Walker. Ms. Amanda.
Yeah, I was taking a look at those prints and everything and I don't, you don't have it up or anything?
Yeah, I can. I will. Okay. Yeah, I will get that up there. Have a color site plan for that, so, for a visual on that.
So that hatched area?
There you go.
That's surrounding the drive-through, is that in the lane? Is that paint or is it a curb?
That's just pavement to provide ample turning radius, but that is the separation between the drive-through lane and the regular drive for, for customers.
So that's just showing the separation, nothing?
Nothing raised, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was wondering, you know, how will the development prevent like traffic from entering through the drive-through from the south entrance?
Well, there will be signage directing them in that direction, but I mean, to be totally honest, I mean, somebody could do that if there's nobody in the lanes and there's only, say, eight cars stacking, somebody could do that if they, if they really wanted. But it was really done for, one, we usually have a little escape lane in the City of O'Fallon, and two, just, just for the turning radiuses around the corners of those buildings with large vehicles and having raised curbs creating problems.
And from the plans you have it, that it's going to circle twice, right? You have to circle the building twice?
You have to go around the building to get in the building. Correct. Because it'll be a counterclockwise direction for the, yeah, I wouldn't expect a car to come in and make a U-turn. So there will be signage directing them to go around the building counterclockwise.
I just have concerns that it's gonna block up that residential street there because since that's the only entrance that you have over there and then.
You mean the drive-through?
Well, the entrance to the, the parking lot there.
Right, but your concern is the drive-through will end up blocking?
Well, the cars, the cars will back up. Have you all done any kind of traffic? How many vehicles like do you expect to use that development during the peak hours?
This is, this is a pretty poor.
I know, I'm not very good at.
But there's 16 or 17 cars that are stacking along around there. So with this type of, there's no inside seating. It's just carryout pickup and the drive-through, that's, that's more than adequate for the stacking for that. So I don't, I don't foresee that because if it stacks around the building, you would have to go around again before it came anywhere near that intersection. So I cannot see that, how that would ever create a problem out there in, in that street.
And so you're planning though, I mean, that they'll circle around, have that, and then any backup will just re-circle it twice or?
It would have to.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if that did happen.
I can tell you, if, if that happens, they'll be very happy with all the business.
Was there not a plan? I mean, because the lot next to it, this was my main concern, is that, that lot next to it is zoned for commercial.
Yes, they're all, all four of those lots, the small lots going to the west are zoned commercial.
So I was wondering, you know, I mean, how that's going to affect that next lot there? And it's owned by the same, right? You own that adjacent lot there.
Well, there'll be separate owners. This one's under contract by a different owner, but the West Willow Nest that you see at the bottom of the, of the screen, the street that it's extending straight to the west actually is the cross access for each of those lots. So there won't be, there won't be people coming in our lot and then going across to another, another parcel. That's, that's done on that West Willow's Nest. The extension is just for these commercial drives, or these commercial lots, sorry. If that was, I'm not sure if that was your question or concern.
It's just, yeah, I just, I mean, I worry about the backup of traffic, you know, the safety of a lot of the pedestrians there, and then the potential for the, the commercial lots. I don't know how this will deter anyone, and especially since there's nothing interconnecting, you're not going to have on the parking lot anything interconnecting. What is that called?
Cross access.
Cross access.
It is interconnected with West Willow Nest, though. That doesn't serve any other purpose than the commercial lots, so that is the access to those four lots. It doesn't go down and then turn into the residential neighborhood, just at this first intersection, if you will.
Mr. Wechler.
Yeah, sorry. Amanda, I think. We spoke about some cross access the other day, but he has pointed out that there will be access to each lot from Willow, Willow Nest Lane.
Correct.
Instead of having cross access between all four lots.
Correct.
It'll all be from the road instead of across the lot.
And since that doesn't provide access anywhere else, it really is just, it kind of serves the same purpose even if it was across all those lots, because it's across their frontage.
Is that it, Amanda? Mr. Wechler.
Something else we spoke about, is, is there any way we could get like a ride-in, ride-out off Lake St. Louis as a secondary exit or nothing?
I'll just say real quick, just when this went through, whether it was the commercial development or the original, there was no additional access. It's going to be allowed to Lake St. Louis Boulevard, and of course, not Highway N or anything like that.
Right. Perfect. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Larry, if you would, step aside.
Thank you.
This is a public comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Arne C., A.C. Deanoff, City Public Advocate. I'm in favor of the Scooters going in at this location. I'm also in favor of the strip mall concept. I believe this will be the fourth Scooters in the City of O'Fallon. They're a successful operation. I'm in favor of this over the other ones because they are actually a fixed physical location. So if they happen to leave or want. because they are actually a fixed, physical location. So if they happen to leave or want to relocate or move, we'll have that option to generate much-needed sales tax for vital city services. The other remaining locations are the barn-type style buildings, and so they're on parking lots mostly, and they're less attractive buildings. This will be a more attractive building. As I said, it'll generate much-needed sales tax that we greatly need. I do have an issue with ballards, and I want to make sure that all appropriate safety ballards, as you all know, I'm a big safety person with walking and pedestrian traffic, and I want to make sure that the correct ballards are used for public safety for people walking to the store from the parking lot, that there's adequate wheel stops that are installed at all parking spots right against the commercial building, and that our code for curbing is meant to its specific needs, because there's a certain height. And if you go throughout our city, some of the retail locations don't have that code curbing, because it may have been a different code at that time. And there's been incidents where we had people jumping the curbs, and you could see it in the news all the time where a car ends up into a building or a commercial retail location. For those reasons, public safety should be number one. I'm all in favor for this application. It's my understanding they're not going to have a walk-up window on the outside like the other facilities, but they will be having people walking from the parking lot to the front door, and we want to ensure that the proper safety ballards and wheel stops are in place. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other speakers, so I'll go ahead and close the public comment. Any other questions for Mr. Walker? Seeing none. Brings the Bill 7769. Motion for first reading?
Casco.
Motion by Casco. Do I have a second? That was close.
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Councilman Casco, please present the bill.
Bill number 7769, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owners of Three Kings Properties to allow a coffee shop with a drive-through in a C2 general business district under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at Lot Four of Shady Creek Commercial within the City of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Next is a public hearing to consider approval of an ordinance amending the current regulations defined in Title IV Land Use Chapter 405. Mr. Bender?
Thank you, Mayor and city council. So this is a proposed change to our sewer lateral pipe, which is the pipe outside the house going from the home to the city's main underground. What we're talking about is changing the current code from a four-inch Schedule 40 pipe to a six-inch SDR 26 pipe. The pipe that's, the SDR 26 is the same thickness as the current code, as the Schedule 40 that we currently have in code. So the upgrade is really to go from a four-inch to a six-inch pipe, like MSD and most of the other sewer districts in the area, and to use the gasketed joints, just like the other sewer districts. This change actually started a couple of years ago when harvest began. At that time, the contractor wanted to use the gasketed joints, because they're familiar with that in the other communities, but our code would not allow that. There is no gasketed joint option with a Schedule 40 pipe. So they proposed doing what the other communities do, which is a six-inch SDR 35 pipe, but that pipe doesn't meet the ordinance thickness that we have in ordinance, so we were not able to allow that. So they chose to upgrade it to the SDR 26 pipe, which does match that. So we were able to approve that because it meet the minimum standards in our ordinance. But now we want to make that change permanent. We've been doing this for about two years with the developments, and that's about it. Oh, we do like the gasketed joints, too. The exterior installation, glued pipes are great for interior installations, but glued pipes on the exterior are not good because there's no flexibility to resist the forces that are created in the ground from the cold weather, the hot weather, the moisture and all that stuff that happens outside. So the gasketed joints gives them flexibility, and we have had failures on the glue joints. So we prefer the gasketed joints, so.
Questions for Mr. Bender? Mr. Kewen?
Yeah, obviously, I have no issue with SDR 26. It's been the standard in the industry for quite some time. My question is, why four-inch to six-inch? And if we're changing the diameter, are we also changing the slope requirements?
No, just the diameter. So...
Okay, but what is the slope requirement on the laterals at this stage? Is it 1 and 8, or is it, or 1/8, or is it 1/16?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, my concern is if you have a lateral that's too big and the slope that's too shallow, then you're going to have, you're going to have sediment in the pipes. You know, part of the, part of the design of sanitary systems, and I know you know this, this is for the folks at home, is to make sure that, A, you have a big enough pipe to carry all of the waste, but B, that you don't have so big a pipe that it all collects on the bottom and ends up shrinking your pipe from sediment in the pipes, which can be hazardous.
Right.
I would, I would look at the slope requirements, and for, if we're going from four-inch to six-inch for a single residence, I would probably want to make sure we were at least an eighth of an inch per foot. But I'm not telling you to do that. I'm just asking, make sure that somebody looks at the slope, make sure that it matches the SDR 26 specs.
Will do.
Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. Bender, if you would, step aside. Thank you. Mr. Deenoff?
Thank you very much. You know, there's a couple outside interests that come into play here. Number one is the Metropolitan Sewer District of St. Louis, MSD. They don't have a good track record. We shouldn't be mirroring or mimicking what MSD does. Also, the HBA of Eastern Missouri, who contributes to a lot of your campaigns, because this is a reduced cost figure for developers. So the HBA, in my opinion, is running this ordinance. They have not been successful in any adjoining or nearby municipalities except for MSD. So we're mirroring and following Metropolitan Sewer District where other municipalities are not using this current method. That's wrong. I'm not opposed to offering this SDR 26, however, and then I'm also in favor of the four to six, from the four to the six-inch diameter. But I want to amend this ordinance, and we should be using for residential sewers, for the sewer line laterals, we should be offering the choice of 40 PVC, which is polyvinyl chloride, and we should be offering SDR 26, which is standard dimension ratio. But we also should be offering a third option, and that's SDR 35. So the SDR 26, if you do your given homework and research, it is less cost, it provides thinner walls, it provides lower pressure PSI, which means you could have collapses or expansions, which means it blows a hole into the lateral sewer line. It's less, provides less pipe stiffness in terms of the material, and the gasket material is failing throughout the country in reports and trade magazines that I have read. We can laugh, Mr. Kewen, but it's not really funny, so. So, in my opinion, this ordinance is driven by the Eastern Missouri Home Builders Association, known as the HBA. The St. Louis Metropolitan Sewer District has a ton of issues, mistakes, errors, causing unnecessary flooding and sewer backups. Just look at the news every other month, and you see where families' homes are being destroyed because of mistakes of MSD. There needs to be different application needs. Let's offer the choice. Let's offer three options.
You have 15 seconds.
And finally, I don't believe that, I believe this whole issue's been rushed instead of studied. We have not asked our neighboring municipalities or any other municipality in St. Charles County that does not offer SDR options.
Mr. Deenoff, your time's up, sir.
Thank you.
We have no other speakers. Any other questions for Mr. Bender? Mr. Kewen?
I'm just going to make a couple of comments since I was brought up during that little commentary. I'm an engineer who's been doing this for 35 years. I actually know what I'm talking about. I didn't read an article on the internet. I actually, have actually designed these systems. SDR 26 is a national standard that's been accepted across the country. It's not anything to do with our contributors, as you always like to suggest, that all 10 of us are up here accepting HBA bribes. Some of us don't even have committees, but I guess you'd know that if you looked. SDR 26 is also more flexible than PVC. I don't know why you'd want to use SDR 35. That's not a national standard. SDR 26 is. And you talk about PSI. If you have PSI in your sewer pipes, there's something seriously wrong with your sewer. It's not a pressurized system. It's a gravity-fed system. So leave the engineering to the engineers, all right? Thanks.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Bender.
I just want to make one big point of clarification, that SDR 26 is a thicker wall pipe. So it's a, it's a standard, if we adopt it, it's a standard better than MSD. So even though the number is 26 and it's lower than 35, it's a thicker wall pipe, and it's a better pipe.
Well, that's surprising. Wow. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Brings the Bill 7770. Motion for first reading? Kewen. Motion by Councilman Kewen, second?
Wechsler.
Second by Councilman Wechsler. Councilman Kewen, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 7770, an ordinance amending Section 405.250 of the O'Fallon City Code regarding development standards for sanitary sewer laterals.
Thank you. Brings the Bill 7771.
Cook.
Motion for first reading. Councilwoman Cook, second?
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Councilwoman Cook, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance approving a petition for voluntary annexation filed by KD Distributing LLC regarding certain property contiguous and compact to the City of O'Fallon, Missouri, and generally located west of 921 Highway K.
Thank you. Brings the Bill 7772. At the workshop, this was discussed by Mr. Snowden about being tabled, so I need a motion to table it? Motion to table. Motion by Councilman Kewen, second by Casco. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brings the Bill 7773. Motion for first reading?
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second?
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Councilman Kewen, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 7773, an ordinance approving memorandum of understanding for public safety communication services with St. Charles Community College.
Thank you. Brings the, any questions or comments on Resolution 710, 2025A? Seeing none. Motion second to, for a motion second to introduce?
Casco.
Motion by Casco, second?
Wechsler.
Second by Councilman Wechsler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe?
Resolution 710, 2025A, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Holcomb CVI LLC, providing two electric-powered 350-bubble storage silos in an amount not to exceed $107,804.
You write them.
I... I just write what they tell me.
Motion for approval?
Casco.
Motion by Casco, second?
Wechsler.
Second by Councilman Wechsler. Councilmember, please cast your vote.
What the hell that is?
The voting is closed.
Ten yes, zero no. Resolution A has been approved. Questions or comments on Resolution B? Motion second to introduce?
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second?
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe?
Resolution 710, 2025B, a resolution authorizing an agreement with MS ISAC, providing for an 18-month membership to receive threat intelligence and other cybersecurity services.
Thank you. Motion for approval?
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second?
Casco.
Second by Casco. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting is closed.
Ten yes, zero no. Resolution B has been approved. No further business. This meeting is adjourned at 8:22.
All done, sir.